Remote meeting of the Manchester Essex Regional School Committee tonight, October 19th at 6:10 PM. Thank you to everybody who's joining us tonight. We will begin with public comment. I just want to take a moment to remind everyone that this is an opportunity for comment, not debate, as our policy states. A school committee meeting is a meeting of government-
Sarah, I see you talking, but I don't hear you. So not sure if you needed to unmute.
Avi, can you hear me?
There we go. Got you now.
All right. We welcome the attendance of members at the school district community to view your school committee as it conducts its regular business meeting. But these meetings are not designed to be an opportunity for dialogue. Please know that while we will not be immediately engaging with your comments or answering questions, we are listening and paying attention to your concerns. During the meeting, we will be focusing on items that are listed on our agenda. If you would like to make a comment, please put your name in town in the chat. Please do not make other comments in the chat. We allot 20 minutes total for public comment, and we ask each person to limit their comments to three minutes. I will be timing the comments, and I will ring my bell after two and a half minutes. After public comment is over, the chat function will be turned off to allow us all to devote our full attention to the meeting. I'm not seeing any commenters in the chat. I feel like maybe I can stop saying my whole long thing. But is there anybody who would like to make a comment? Please put your name in town in the chat. If there's anybody on the phone who would like to make a comment, please unmute yourself and identify yourself. Okay, so I guess we have no public comment tonight. Do we have a student report tonight? I don't see Lucas, and I don't know if we've elected a new student representative.
Sarah, we're in the process currently. We have our first meeting with the new student board at the end of the month, and at that time, we will elect a new student representative for the school year.
Okay, well, spoiler alert, because I was going to talk about how we're getting that new group going, but awesome. Okay, so no student report tonight. So I will just go right into my report. Thank you, everybody, for being here. The first thing I was going to say was that we have a newly established student advisory board to the school committee, and I look forward to meeting with that group next week. Fall is in the air, and all of the usual back-to-school activities are happening. The evening football games are fun and a great way to get out there and absorb some school spirit while supporting our team. There is one more home game coming up on October 29th. We are in the middle of open houses. I attended the high school open house, and it was wonderful to see the teachers in person and hear about everything the students are doing this year and catch up with families. Tonight, we are looking forward to hearing state-of-the-school presentations from the middle school and high school administrators. Thanks again for joining us and for continuing to participate in the conversations with your school committee in a kind and respectful manner. We really appreciate our community of parents and families and teachers and administrators. And now we will just move on to the consent agenda, which includes warrants 1012, which had miscellaneous items, and 1013, which was the Manchester Memorial School, and the minutes from September 21st. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Kate.
Kate moves. Is there a second?
Second, Harrington.
Thank you, Matt. Is there any discussion on the warrants or the minutes? I have a quick comment on the warrant, which I just love reading that warrant when it's all the school supplies, and we're buying things like glue and paper and Play-Doh and Sharpie markers. I got so excited for the beginning of the school year, reading that thing. All right, so I need to do a roll call, and we are down. Eric and Ken are both not with us right now, but we should have everybody else. So I'm going in and out of order. So Kate, are you a yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Chris?
Yes.
Great, and I am also a yes. So the consent agenda passes unanimously. And then we are just moving on to subcommittee reports. Teresa and Chris, is there an elementary facilities building committee report tonight?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay, thanks for letting me know. Is there a finance committee report?
Just that the budget workshop with the Essex income has been rescheduled. I'm not sure if that was announced at the last meeting or not, but it has been rescheduled to November 3rd.
November 3rd, awesome.
But the collaboration group has not met.
Okay. Thank you. And do we know when the collaboration group is meeting next?
I don't have anything on my calendar, so I'll put out a note to everybody to see if we can get something together before we meet on November 3rd. Typically, we like to have a session before we go into a large meeting.
Yeah, I think that would be really great.
Yep.
Awesome.
I was just gonna add, it's an in-person meeting. We found out it's not a virtual meeting. So for those of you that are excited to be there, it will be onsite.
Okay.
Yeah, 7:00 PM at Essex Town Hall.
7:00 PM at Essex Town Hall. Awesome. Policy committee has a lot to talk about.
Yep, so we met to discuss the naming policy for the playgrounds. We reviewed the policy as written and found it fine and decided that we're going to back back the policy to the schools. Oh, there it is. Thanks, Pam.
Yep.
So that the students at both elementary schools can be part of the naming process. So they will engage with their school teams to learn more about our naming policy and then to vote for names, which they will then bring to us and propose to us in a meeting.
I think that sounds awesome. Do we need to do-
I think it'll be a fun way to get the kids involved and sort of more engaged with school committee at the elementary level. I think it's a fun way to draw them into that, and I think that they will be excited about it, too.
I think so, too. Thank you for taking the time to work on this.
Yeah, does the large committee have any thoughts on a timeline? So when I can communicate with the principals about this activity, is it something you'd like to see brought to you in December, January, February, knowing that they'll need a little startup time to kind of work with the different grade-level groups in each building to figure out a process for doing this?
Well, I feel like the Essex group is really raring to go on this because they've been, right, they've been working on it for a long time, and I don't think it needs to be at the same time, right? I think one group could go, and then the other group could go.
Okay.
I mean, I'd be happy to hear them whenever they're ready to come.
All right, so why don't I go out, have some conversations, get a sense of how long they think it will take for them to get it organized, to get a recommendation, and we'll work with our calendar from there? Does that make sense?
Yeah. That sounds great. Awesome. Thank you so much for working on this. I think it's a really, I think for all those kids who had to live without a playground for a whole year, it's a great way to, you know, be, add a little extra excitement to the new playground and have some ownership over that for them. So I think that's great. All right. Negotiating team didn't meet. We have reached out to the teachers' union. We're looking forward to getting started on our new contract negotiations. And that's it. Up over to you, Pam.
Okay, so back to the slides. Give me one quick second. Now I've lost it. All right, there it is. Sometimes it just seems so complicated for nothing. Just a couple of quick updates. It won't take a lot of time. Just wanted to thank everybody who came out, came out, came out to the virtual meeting with Dr. Elizabeth Englander. She presented last Wednesday night on basically life online after the pandemic with a concentration on cyberbullying and student mental health. A very well-attended presentation. I think we had upwards of 50 people, which is, which is a good showing for us. We'd always like to see more. I do think we're seeing that the virtual format allows people to fit it into their schedules better, so we're going to keep that in mind going forward. But the long and the short of it is, she has some great advice for parents on how to manage technology in the home, set boundaries with their students, and manage issues as they arise, if there are conflicts online that are happening between kids. Good advice on how to approach the school. Her PowerPoint is available. There is no recording of the presentation, but we can post those slides so that people can take a look at her. Great advice. I don't know if any of the committee members or folks that are here tonight were there and had any feedback that I can share with her or feedback for us as we think about these presentations in the future.
I have to say that even though it was online, I did not have the stamina for another presentation at 7 o'clock on that night. Did anybody else get to see it? I have seen her before, and she's great.
I did not see her this time. I believe that I saw her last time, was that two years ago? But I did hear from some elementary parents that they really appreciated it, and they got a lot out of it.
Good.
It's great, because she speaks as a professional but also as a parent, so there's a nice intersection between the theory and the reality. And she is just very, very tuned in to what we're all going through in terms of working with kids and helping them manage life online. What I love about her message is that really it's not, technology isn't the issue. It's the same behaviors in a new environment, right? So it's typical student behavior, whether it's middle school, high school, or elementary, but playing out in a different, through the technology tools, which kind of escalates the stakes and the outcome. So I love that message, and if anyone has an opportunity, she presents all over the state. If you go to her website, which we can post on the blog and on our website, there's a ton of resources there for parents if you weren't able to make the presentation. So that was fantastic evening. Just a quick update on our DEI work. We continue to focus in on, we're doing, we're getting ready to launch more organized reporting on all of our initiatives and pass off the strategic plan to the schools for the school councils to start working on. But we did start stepping into some of our DEI work last year. So just a couple of quick updates on how it relates to our core value on equity and our strategic initiative to celebrate and nurture and create an inclusive and diverse school culture. So we continue our work with Michael Eteman. He will be here for leadership team coaching, our second session, next Tuesday morning. We're planning for him to help us organize and deliver our January PD Day, so taking our culture initiative to the entire faculty and sharing his knowledge with them. How we've got it structured is essentially the leadership team is doing a preview of the work and preparing to lead and support Michael as he's introduced to the staff. So we're working this fall to meet him, learn from him, and then begin to deliver some of that content to the, to the teachers, beginning in our, on our full day in January. Then we, we continue to remind people that our SEL and Ruler work was really our first step into developing a culture that supports inclusion by helping us develop our social emotional toolbox, as well as our emotional intelligence knowledge base. So we start with that strong foundation, and now we begin to develop this work into equity, anti-racism, and inclusive culture building. One more thing that's on the horizon under this initiative is we were accepted to be part of the Teacher Diversification PLC that the DESE is sponsored. So I will be attending that first meeting next week. And the goal there is to get people from around the state together to learn from some experts on how we can develop an environment and some practices to enhance our candidate pools as we look to hire for next year. Sarah already mentioned, we've got a couple more open houses coming up. We've got two under our belt. Thursday night will be Memorial School, so parents will get their first peek at the inside. I'm sure some have made their way in already. Just want to put a disclaimer out there, and we're going to send a note out probably tomorrow or Thursday morning, that we're so excited for parents to get in and see where we're at with the Memorial School, but we are still actively in Phase 3. So there are little things that aren't finished, and, and we know that. So there's a threshold missing here, or the banister hasn't been completed in another location. So there are little things along the way that you'll probably see, but just know that they are working through their punch list, and that should all be brought to completion. We're looking at late November now, and we're still actively working on identifying a date for the ribbon-cutting ceremony, but the timeline's a little unclear as to when they're exactly going to wrap up. So it's ready to receive. It's a safe and welcoming place, but there's a few finishing touches that just aren't quite there yet that you might notice. And then the middle school will be next Thursday evening to complete our October open house schedule. And just wanted to touch on quickly, but there isn't a lot to say, and I'm really excited that there isn't a lot to say, just on the COVID report. We're keeping the dashboard active. We have had no cases this week that have been reported. Our official update is due next, tomorrow afternoon in preparation for submitting our numbers to the state. But you'll see, our numbers continue to be extremely low. I think both our in-school mitigation efforts, people's adherence to masking, and just the general vaccination level in our two communities is really working to our benefit in that we have very few faculty or students missing school due to COVID, and we haven't had any instances of COVID spreading in school since we've been back. A reminder that we're not sending out emails when cases pop up unless we get to a state where we have some type of small outbreak in a class or on a team that would merit us communicating a little bit more detail than our weekly reporting. We do have our testing program provisioned and available. We just have not had to use it yet, but the nurses have been working on the state, with the state on that. You probably have heard some reporting about delays. Our case count and our needs have, has served us well because we haven't been directly impacted by the slowness on the state side. So we are in good shape there. And then DESE is, has mandated, you know, they've extended the mask mandate until 11:01, and based on a conversation I had today, it's expected to be extended further with some discussion of it being, you know, some hope that they might carry it through the holidays and look at the mid-year point as the next point of evaluation. I have no idea if that will come to be, but I know that's something my group has been asking for, my group being MASSF in North Shore, just because I think what we're seeing locally as a great benefit is just predictability and consistency. We're not having, there's not a lot of ups and downs in what the rules are. The expectations are clear, routines have been established, and it seems to be serving us well. One other piece of information I did receive on the vaccine front is that there's a recommendation coming out of the state that we hold on any vaccine mandates until the law and the statewide DPH catches up with us, because it's the purview, it's the outlook of the DESE right now, that DPH holds the authority to mandate vaccines, not the localities. They've also given the caveat that if we wanted to challenge that, we could. I know they're waiting on some clarification on the Biden order about organizations of over 100 employees and whether or not that applies to public schools. So with a lot of legal determinations up in the air and the advice that we're seeking, combined with our high vaccination rate already, I would say we continue to hold on any determination of mandates until the legal picture becomes a bit clearer to us. And that is what I have tonight.
Thanks, Pam.
So any questions? Anything that I've forgotten that you were looking for an update on?
I don't think so. That sounded good. Sounded like school is happening in all the ways that school is supposed to happen, which is super exciting.
You know, I found myself saying that to a colleague. We are very lucky. I mean, I know people are working extremely hard, and, you know, there is some bit of a hangover from last year in terms of, it doesn't feel like we've ever stopped, but I do think, you know, whether you're at the Friday night game or, you know, just watching the kids during the day where they're lunching outside, and they're just doing their normal thing, and it's great to see. So we're going to enjoy this for as long as we can.
Awesome. Anybody else have questions or comments for Pam? Then we move on. I don't think Cheryl's here to give a CPAC update tonight. I don't see her there. Cheryl, if you're here, can you unmute and let us know? Yeah, so I don't think we have a CPAC update tonight, and we could probably go right into the appointment of the Essex Tech School Committee representative and get that done.
Okay, I didn't, I posted my email, but didn't see any official letter like we received last time, but we did get an email request from Essex asking us to reappoint Alva Angahoro as the Essex representative to the Essex Tech School Committee.
But we never, we never appointed her in the first place, did we?
You did, and I think what Jeff had said in his email is that it was a temporary appointment because she was filling a vacancy when someone stepped off, and now this is the beginning of her real appointment. So it's just, I would say we could call it a confirmation of Alva's appointment to the board.
Okay, well, could I have a motion to reappoint Alva to the Board of Essex Tech?
So moved, Whitman.
Second?
Second.
All right, Kate, are you, is there any discussion? And Alva's great, and she was on the school committee for a long time, and I'm really glad that she's willing to do this for our town. So thank you, Alva. Kate, are you a yes?
Yes.
Yes, Matt?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. And that's all of us who are here tonight. Okay, awesome. So that passes unanimously, and thank you, Alva, for your service. And we can have our presentations from our high school and middle school administrators.
So the way we organized them this year was to kind of start with the end in mind. You'll hear state of the schools from, starting with the high school and then middle school and the two elementary schools at our next meeting. I like starting with where the kids end, because what you'll hear at the other levels is where they are in progress to what the overall outcome is intended to be. So starting with where they end up is something that I think is very inspirational, maybe too strong a word, but it gives you a good sense of how things play out over time, despite some of the bumps and bends that the process takes along the way. So starting with the high school, we'll get a sense of where, where we are and where we hope all of our students will be after they finish their journey. Awesome. Do you want me to share, Pam, or will you share for me? Oh, I can't hear you. Can you hear me now? With the upgrade, the share's been a little glitchy, so if you want to go ahead and try, that's fine. If it gives you trouble, I can just put up the PDF that I have.
Okay, I'm gonna try. There. There. Ah, there we go.
All right, then.
All right. So yeah, and what you guys were just talking about in terms of like school being kind of normal and things being back to like what we're used to, I wanted to start off just with this picture. This is our first home Friday night game. This was a pink night, supportive breast cancer. You can see me and Mr. Richards with the kids there. And, you know, when we come to Friday Night Lights, we have the pep band, we have the cheerleaders, we have our fans, and we have whichever team might be playing. And really, the kids have come out in full force and are really passionate about what's happening, and we've seen a lot of school spirit. So to kind of frame what I want to talk about tonight, I think it's, the most important thing, when we talk about coming back from the pandemic, is not necessarily always the scores, but it's about the culture. And so I'm gonna share some anecdotal information about our school culture. I'm gonna give you a look at our MCAS scores from 2019 to 2021. That's for grades nine and 10 at the high school. And then I want to have, take a look at our AP scores, which kind of show how our kids in 11 and 12 did over the time of the pandemic. And as you look at this picture, you'll see our National Merit Scholarship Committee scholarship students for 2021, we had four students, which is a great, really tribute to these kids' academic success.
Chris, I think there's a little lag, because we're still seeing the, I think there's a little lag in the slides.
Oh, really?
We missed the picture of the, the merit scholars.
Are they right there? Can you see them? Yes, okay. Can we see anecdotal school culture?
Yes.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure we're on par here. And I'm just gonna stay on this format as opposed, as opposed to going to the full screen show. So anecdotally, Joanne Mano in the middle school put together a great survey for our teachers to get some anecdotal information about how our kids are doing and what they're seeing in terms of the kids' readiness in their classes. And in terms of student learning, we're seeing a moderate to no impact in student learning. And I would say the greatest impact may be in math, and we can talk about that when we see the math, the math MCAS scores. In terms of social emotional health, you know, we're, we're seeing kids that are happy to be in school, to be reconnected to school. But yeah, in our grades nine and 10, we're seeing students who present less mature. And that's actually kind of funny to me as a high school principal, because I do CAF duty every day, and in the beginning of the year, ninth grade students can't sit down. They're walking around, there's food everywhere, and it takes the upperclassmen to kind of say, that's not the way we behave. We behave better than that. And so this year, I mean, we're working with both the ninth and 10th grade as presenting a little less mature, but yet they're kind of on track to be where they should be by mid-year in terms of understanding social expectations at the high school level. And then teachers unanimously were able to just kind of type in what they thought about students, and they stated, students are eager to learn, they're happy to be in school, they have a positive outlook towards each other and their school community. I've spoken to a few students who would have been considered school-avoidant in grade nine and 10, and now post-pandemic, they're kind of saying, you know what? I realize how much I appreciate school, and I actually realize more than ever that school has always been my safe space. And I just, I, those things moved me so much to see these kids who were really, you know, not happy in school, to really be very happy in school as 11th and 12th graders. Oh, sorry. If we look to our MCAS scores, so we're gonna skip 2020 because there were not MCAS scores reporting at that time, and we can just look at the meeting and exceeding, which seems to be the benchmark. And in ELA, you know, we did fall a little bit from 85 to 82, but it's somewhat consistent. In math, a little more concerning, 82 to 71, and we'll talk a little bit more about that when we get down to looking at the math scores. And then in biology, pretty consistent, 94 to 90. And throughout this presentation, I'm gonna just kind of show pictures of kids in school, and this is a picture of our kids, you know, collaborating in a science- And this is a picture of our kids, you know, collaborating in a science lab, working on a lab and, you know, really having a normal experience in school. I wanted to include this picture because this is our class called Facing History and Ourselves. Mr. Malady is the teacher. And for 9/11, he had them put together a memorial for those who were lost on 9/11. They walked down and they paid tribute to the Ralph Crenshaw bench down on the waterfront. They named all the names of the people that were lost on 9/11 and read several poems and had a flower presentation concerning that day. And I think that's really important because what we're doing is helping our students who were not alive on 9/11 to remember the events of those days that have impacted many of us. If we go back to MCAS scores and we look at the ELA scores, there's some really kind of awesome news here. And then if we look at our exceeding students in 2019, our 2021 exceeding students actually increased. That being said, we need to look more deeply at our partially meeting students and have them move to meeting expectations. There's one thing I do want to talk about when we talk about this type of reporting of MCAS scores. And that when we look at scores, we are now in the Next Generation Test that talks about exceeding, meeting, partially meeting, and not meeting. And we actually have a crosswalk through the legacy test in terms of determining if students have met the graduation requirement. So there are students who are in the not meeting expectations who actually have met the graduation competency determination for the high school. Because DEFC has created this crosswalk between the two tests because their achievement levels are different. And I'm happy to talk more about that at the end if you have questions. So we look at ELA. We did have some areas of improvement, mainly vocabulary within context and some other grammatical concepts. And these skills, I mean, what the English teachers tell me is yes, we can look at these more closely in instruction, beginning in grade nine with a special focus on vocabulary. That being said, we do do a deep dive in the vocabulary in the high school that may need to provide a greater focus of using those words in context in literature. That's what we need to move towards. Our areas of strength are writing. And as you can see at the bottom, you know, our kids are strong where they need to be. Essay writing, writing, reading for purpose, content, and ability to identify main ideas. And when we, when we survey our students who have graduated from MERS, consistently, they tell us they are far more prepared for writing at the college level than their peers. And I think our areas of strength here in the MCAS data reflect that. Again, just more student learning and kind of collaboration in the classroom. This is the type of thing that we see typically in the high school is kids really working together and problem solving. And the upper left-hand quadrant is Mrs. Kristi Ummeli, who's our Science Department Chair, and this is her biotech class. And Mr. Dan Richards, who's the Dean of Students this year, who has added a lot to our community. So when you look at math, we see a little different of a story. We see a decline in the exemplary of student achievement. And we see an increase in the partially meeting. And really, our goal is again to get those partially meeting students to the meeting achievement level. And when we look at where our strengths and weaknesses were, there's one information, there's one point that kind of tells a little bit of a story. And that's statistics and probability. And there were specific standards, not all of them, but there were specific standards that the high school decided not to teach last year. They said, you know what? We have a reduced time for instruction. We're going to move this to junior year Algebra II. And they have done that and they've realigned their curriculum. So you can kind of see that in terms of our decrease in scores. We see information concerning algebra and concerning sequence and series. This unit is currently being reviewed for more explicit instruction. And the math department also wants to identify students transitioning from the middle school who may have struggled in math, provide targeted assistance to make sure that they move towards meeting expectations. Now, before I leave our conversation about MCAS scores, I do want to say we're the end. So all of our scores, which are fairly strong, are the results of everything that happens at the middle school and at the elementary school. So we're kind of the recipients of students who come ready to learn for us. If we look at our strengths in mathematics, we did score higher than the state in each of the topics. Again, probability and statistics is probably a little misleading. It's a very small percentage of the test, yet we chose not to teach most of that. Yet our kids did well based on their learning and understanding in prior grades. Again, this is more of a school culture slide, and this is our senior sunrise. This was the kids on the first day of school going to the sunrise down on Singan Beach. And for our 11th and 12th graders, we report on our AP scores. And you'll see that our scores were fairly consistent going into 2021. 2020 is not a typical year and is not representative of typical scores because it was a different test. And at our school, all students who take the AP exam are required, AP class, are required to take the AP exam. And not all students were required to participate in 2020. One of the things we're very proud of is our open access to AP classes. And this is representative of that. So 63% of the class of 2021 scored a three or higher on one or more AP exam, meaning that most likely more than 65 to 70% of class students were enrolled in an AP class during their high school experience. And again, that is about the open access. And when we look at our scores for AP, you'll see that this past year during the pandemic, we scored significantly higher than the global percentage of scores three or higher. And there's a few places I'd like to highlight, one being chemistry, where we scored 91% of our students scoring three or higher. In 2019, that number was 15%. And after 2019, we did make adjustments to our practice where we put AP chemistry in junior year so that students take chemistry in sophomore year and then adjust to AP chemistry. So there's almost two years of standards taught there, which allows students to achieve a higher score. In comp science, you'll see that we scored 83% higher than the global mean of 65. In 2019, that number was 23%. And again, we've adjusted our curriculum to meet the needs and experiences of students moving into the comp side test. And then, again, these are all of our AP courses. And you will see they're all significantly higher than the global mean. But one place I really want to place a highlight is when we made this presentation in 2019, Physics C Mechanical, only 52.4% of students earned a three or higher on the AP Physics C Mechanical AP exam. And that was 100% this year. We made an adjustment to our practice in that we now teach Physics Mechanical back-to-back with our calculus program so that students learn to apply the calculus they are learning to physics. So they become one in the same, and there are opportunities for the two teachers to co-teach. So that's kind of the end of our nuts and bolts. The one thing I would say we're looking forward to and providing more data to you is our NEASC Desile visit, which will be happening November 13th to November 16th, where they will review our progress of a school, as a school, based on their collaborative visit three years ago. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Tricia. Does anybody have questions for Tricia?
Tricia, I have a question because my kids are still far from this age. So I don't really know how academic supports work at the high school level in our district. How are you identifying those middle schoolers that are coming up who might need some extra help? And then what does that support look like in the high school?
Yeah, I hear that. So a few different things happen. We do have meetings between the middle school and high school as our transition kind of carries forward. I think we need to, one of the things we've identified is that we need to have better communication between the middle school eighth grade and our ninth grade teachers. It does happen, but I think we need to formalize that better. In terms of support for students, we have a number of regular ed and special ed supports available to students in the high school. We do have co-taught classes in mathematics, in algebra, and geometry. We have a regular support program called the Academic Center, which helps students that might be struggling either with academics or with executive functioning to help them stay on track in the high school and to find success. So I think our comment out of this presentation is maybe a formalization of identifying the students coming from the middle school. We do it anecdotally, but we need to formalize that process.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Teresa's raising her hand. Go ahead, Teresa.
I know you didn't present all of the exact numbers and everything, but looking at the junior and senior kids who aren't AP students, are they basically in line with what we're seeing in ninth and 10th? How is that working? Because those are the ones I'd be more concerned about.
Yes, definitely. So our students that are coming through after grade 10, if they are not, if they are partially meeting or not meeting expectations, then we're tracking them through grade 11 and grade 12 to assure they're finding success in both ELA and in math. And all of our students, which is not, well, it is typical at Aubrey High School for all students to have a four-year English graduation requirement. It is not the norm, well, actually, no, I wouldn't say it is the norm, but it doesn't happen at every high school that all students are required to complete successfully four years of mathematics. So in terms of our idea of the vision of the graduate, our goal is to get those students to meet those elements of the vision of the graduate. And currently, our academic kind of progression through our disciplines will help them to do that. So we feel as though we are graduating students who are college and career ready. Did that answer your question? Or do you want something more specific to MCAS? Because I'm happy to go there, too.
I guess I was just wondering, are we looking at the same? There was, there was a slight drop here for X number of students, you know, just roughly that kind of thing coming out of pandemic.
Yeah, we are looking at that. And we've adjusted our curriculum because we know that there were standards that were maybe limited over last year, particularly in math more so than other disciplines. Because math is that skill-building area that if you don't have this skill, you can't get to here. The math teachers have had to backtrack a little bit to help students to fill in those gaps so they can be successful going forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have questions for Tricia? I can't see you all, so you just need to speak up. I mean, I don't have any questions. I was at the high school open house. It was awesome. The teachers were so enthusiastic. My kids are having a great year, so I don't really have questions. But thank you very much for this presentation. I really appreciated seeing all the pictures of the kids in there. I think it's great.
Thank you so much. And I just want to say one last thing. I'm just really proud of our kids. They've come back to school and they have been outstanding. And you know, I, we love interacting with them. And the way they've been behaving at our events is just unbelievable. We're just very proud of them.
Awesome. Actually, it was really funny because I think there was a football game and the kids were being slightly obnoxious and you, or maybe Dan, had to say something to them. And then they started chanting that they were sorry afterwards. It was like only in Manchester, Essex, do kids then chant their apologies to the crowds after they've been a little sassy. So it was very good.
It was one of my favorite moments of the year, so thank you.
Pretty funny. All right. Well, thanks, Tricia. And I guess we can, to Mrs. Mano.
Everybody?
Hi.
I will also attempt the share of my screen and see how it goes. Thanks, everybody, for inviting us. It's exciting to be back and sharing information about our kids that are in school with us, right where we want them to be. Can you see this?
Talking away over here. I'm making it a presenter right now. It should come up shortly.
So let's take a look. I can't see any of you anymore, so.
We're all here. I'm talking, but I'm muted.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have, I see my screen up, ready to share, but I'm just not sure.
We're not seeing it quite yet.
Sometimes there's a little delay. Is it giving you any error messages, Joanne, or are you?
It's not. It's giving me, it is giving me some security and privacy messages. I'm working off a new laptop and just recently downloaded Cisco to it. So.
Well, let me know how it's going.
Are you able to share the PDF, Pam, since this doesn't seem to be working?
You go on and find it.
Thank you for that.
Yep. Not wanting to share. I'm also having a little trouble with it. Let's see. There we go.
All right. Wonderful. You know, it might be my Carol Merrill. I'm dating myself. I should probably say Vanna White. More people know who she is.
Just give me the cue when you need me to move.
Okay, thanks. So I'm excited to share tonight. I too will be talking about culture. I'll be sprinkling some photos throughout the presentation so that you can get a sense of what it's like culturally in the middle school right now. And if we look at the next slide. So we'll, similar to Tricia's presentation, we will start with our faculty and staff perspectives, which are anecdotal but important, I think. When you look at the collective experience of teachers in the middle school, you're talking about tens and tens and tens of years of working with literally thousands of middle school students over the years. So their, their perspectives, though anecdotal, are really insightful, I think. We'll look at standardized testing data, which is MCAS. And then we'll look at some of our benchmark assessment data. We'll focus in on the areas of strength that teachers are seeing, what the tests are showing us, and then the focus areas of improvement. And then we will talk about what we're doing to support students in learning. So first and foremost, we're happy to be back. This is mostly sixth graders you're looking at here, together, outside. They don't have masks on because they're outside. They're happy. That bottom right picture is a community meeting of our sixth grade. This is the first time in years that we have had a class fewer than 100 students. Our current sixth grade is in the 70s. So it's really kind of a treat for our teachers to be able to run classes and conduct classes like lots of other middle schools that have, you know, class sizes of 80 to 85 versus, you know, 100 to 120. So everybody's feeling good. So everybody's feeling good. Okay, so Tricia mentioned the survey that we had teachers take. And essentially, what we wanted to ask is, you know, based on previous years, rank students in these areas. And the ranking was one to five, one being I see little to no change, five being I see substantial change. And the areas on the left are, you know, are you seeing gaps in their understanding of grade level content and standards? So they're, they're right in the middle, you know, moderate change. There's not no impact, but there's not a substantial impact that is causing great, great concern. Students readiness for, for learning, again, it's a moderate impact. Social emotional health, moderate impact, and their overall level of maturity, a little bit higher. Teachers are seeing a little bit more immature behaviors. And that's to be expected because our kids have been in their bedrooms for a year and a half, you know, somewhat isolated and learning remotely. Areas of strength that they're noticing are use of technology, which is really, you would say, well, of course, you know, because they've been on their computers throughout the pandemic with remote learning. But if you were to talk to us three years ago, this would have been an area we were concerned with. This is the world that our kids are moving into, needing to use technology for careers, for education, for social interactions. And we were having the discussion of, you know, how, how and where and when will we teach them how to use Google Classroom? Teach them how to use all the different tools that we have. And our kids, just like us, were drinking from the technology water hose last year. And the result of that has been a tremendous increase in students' ability to use technology. And they are demonstrating literally no need to have any instruction in this area. They, they know exactly what they're doing. They're well-versed. In some cases, they're correcting teachers or guiding teachers through certain things. Teachers are noticing that the kids are working independently very well. They are very enthusiastic for school. They're demonstrating flexibility in their thinking. And, you know, when the teachers are saying this, it's comparable to other years. So these strengths are areas of improvement for our kids. They see that they're open to trying new things comparatively. They're really helpful and kind to each other. They're very, very social. They're demonstrating resilience. They're inquisitive and enthusiastic. And that message of resilient, ready, and engaged was a resounding message from all of the teachers. Focus areas for improvement are really areas that we focus on with middle schoolers all the time anyway. You know, I say this all the time, eleven to fourteen-year-olds and the brain changes that happen through those years is really almost unprecedented, except for that birth-to-three brain growth and development. So it's a time of transition, a hormonal influx, social, social mercurial relationships, on again, off again. And their brain, as we know, is, is just not developed. And it's being flooded with a lot of exterior and interior inputs. So they need help with organization and planning all the time, but much more so now. Now that they're, you know, they're going from one classroom at the elementary school, where they spend all day with one teacher and the same, you know, twenty or so students, to ten classes, ten teachers, transitioning, moving, and then through a pandemic and learning from home and learning remotely in there. So their organizational and planning skills need to be focused on. They are showing that we need to work on building their stamina for doing school. Getting to school at seven in the morning or seven-thirty, you know, whenever they show up, and doing, managing your materials, making those transitions, getting to know all the different personalities of new kids in your class and new teachers and some different strategies and structures. So they, they're tired and, and it shows. And we're working on that and gradually increasing our, our rigor over time in order to meet them where they are, but still keep that, keep them within the zone of proximal development for that. And the opposite side of the very social coin is the impulsivity, a control, which again is something that middle schoolers typically are challenged with, and we're seeing a little bit more of it this year. And remembering school is a place that has rules and has structures. So this pro-con or strength and, and challenges list really, really pleases me because it's showing me that there's nothing out of the norm. It's nothing that we haven't dealt with in the past. It's nothing that we aren't skilled at doing. And we just need to spend a little bit more time in these areas. All right. So this is a picture of one of our grades at Project Adventure at Camp Spindrift up in Gloucester. And you may be aware that in September, we did three separate field trips, one for each grade, to bring the kids to Camp Spindrift to work on different challenging activities, to work on teamwork, to demonstrate and practice leadership, to support each other, and really to, to enhance collaboration within an environment of uncertainty. It's part of our social emotional learning, part of the social emotional work we're doing with kids. When I became the principal, six years ago, we had the New England League of Middle Schools come in and do a whole school assessment. And the overwhelming feedback from then at that time was you need to look like more of a middle school, more student choice, more student-centered learning, more interactive learning, more collaborative learning, authentic projects, authentic assessments, and a strong focus on the social and emotional health of our kids. So we've really spent the last five years, interrupted by a pandemic, focusing on this, working with Ruler and getting ourselves to where we're looking much more culturally like a middle school. And this is just one of the efforts. I also thought it would be interesting and helpful to share behavioral data with you. So the first top of this graph is the first six weeks of school in 2019, and it's discipline referrals to the office. And then the first six weeks within 2020, when the kids were in school, and then the first six weeks of the year that we're in now. And this is discipline referrals to the office. So it's your out-of-the-norm, not standard classroom management and behavior types of issues, but more elevated behaviors that really need a more focused attention and intervention by the dean of students or by myself. So you can see 2019, we had seventy-eight referrals. 2020, we had thirty-three, and then this year, we've had five. The data below this is referrals for mental health or psych services, which essentially means students that we referred for, referred parents to or called in crisis intervention for hospitalization for mental health reasons. And you can see the, the trend there and, and the low incidence anyway. This data is a resounding affirmation for me that the social emotional work that we've been doing and focusing on at the middle school is spot-on. Our teachers are leaning into the work. They are understanding children as they see them. They are focusing on, we're, we're doing more work this year with trauma-informed instruction. And rather than a teacher just, you know, I'm teaching and you're just, you're disrupting the class or doing XYZ and go to the office, they're now stopping, they're pausing, they're saying to the student, you know, what's going on, what's happening? And they are doing the work in the classroom where it should be done in most cases. And this tells me that. Anecdotal communications I've had with my colleagues in the field is that this isn't necessarily the trend at other schools. I'm hearing from other principals that behaviors are, are escalating. One principal shared an article from a Vermont school, you know, students in crisis. And we meet regularly, and this is something that we'll be talking about. But my colleagues are challenged by student behavior right now. And in a way that we're just not. So it speaks volumes to the skill of our teachers, to the SEL work we've done over the years, and also speaks to our community and the commitment of our families. So I'm very proud of this, this work. Here's some current year pictures, kids connecting with music and the arts. All right. So we'll move into MCAS review. And before we do that, I just want to frame this for you a little bit to kind of bring us into the, you know, where, where we were when this testing was happening. So middle school students were fully remote from March of 2020 through December twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one. So they were learning from home, fully remotely, asynchronously to start in that first spring when the pandemic, pandemic hit and we were all kind of catching our breath and figuring out what we were going to do with this. And then we had some teacher training over the summer and we were ready to move into synchronous instruction in the fall. So we did that. And then in January of 2021 is when the hybrid high flex model started, meaning half of our kids came in for two days, the other half came in for the other two days, and then they were out for three. So in for two, out for three. We had all students remote one of the five days of the week. Most of our kids returned to full in-person learning in April. Just under six percent of those students remained fully remote. That's about eighteen kids, just to give you a perspective. Fifteen of them were in eighth grade, and then the other three were sixth or sixth and seventh. But even though the majority of our kids were back in person, we were still doing the online high flex model, which means that students in the classroom were learning through the remote model from their laptops. Teachers were still projecting remotely to students at home. So even if the class was, you know, twenty-two students in front of you and one student at home, this, at home, the structure was still that high flex synchronous model. So school really never looked like school for the kids. Really, until this year. And even at that, we're still in masks, but it feels much, much more like school. So they headed into their MCAS assessments with this kind of foundation. So we'll look grade by grade, six, seven, and eight, at our, our performance versus the state. So the slides that you're looking at here, and I don't know if you can see the little numbers at the top of the blue, green, orange, and red, but those are percentages. Essentially, what you want to look for when you look at these, these graphs is more blue and green on the left-hand side. That's the school. Thanks for that, Pam. And, you know, more blue and green than there is on the, on the right, which is the state scores. And the, you know, I won't bury the lead. The overall summary of our performances against the state is that, for the most part, we outperformed. In some cases, we were really neck and neck with the state, which, you know, I want to say, oh, isn't that good? But really, we should be far outperforming the state numbers, and we're not. And so that's something for us to consider. So seventh grade, oh, oh, going back to a little picture here. So culture, NELMS feedback. So what you're looking at here is our sixth grade during ME block. ME block is a time at the end of every day for kids to get organized, have an end-of-the-day check-in, do homework, do some, you know, writing or reading, or, you know, put together a pop-up shop to raise funds to buy your class pet. This is completely student-driven. This is all done through the middle school academy class. And the kids came to the teacher, said they wanted a class pet. The teacher had them do all of the legwork in terms of, you know, what are the allergies? And what are the care, what are the needs and the care? And they did graphs and charts and, okay, how are we going to buy the things? And, and we'll, we'll create bracelets, we'll create bookmarks, we'll create little magnets, and we will sell them in pop-up shops during ME block. So authentic learning, student-centered learning, student-driven. And, you know, when I reflect back on the feedback from NELMS and then I see the reality of what's happening in the school now, it just makes me really proud of my team. Okay, seventh grade data, again, looking for us to, looking for outperformance of the state. More blue and green on the left than we see on the right, because I'm not sure how well you can see these slides. So we are, you know, perform, outperforming the state. Our students who are exceeding expectations are either equal to, in this case, a little bit below the state, a percentage point below the state. So, you know, I want to say, oh, isn't that great that we outperformed the state? But again, work to be done because we should be doing much better in terms of our numbers compared to the state. And I'll get into that a little bit more when we look at our own specific school data. So learning through authentic learning and creating, this is seventh grade science during life sciences, and they're understanding pollination and reproduction and plant life. And they're creating their own models of a flower to demonstrate that they understand all the parts. And this is part of our STEM scopes hands-on curriculum. And keeping those bodies moving, even with their masks on, they are jumping and having a great time in gym class. And our eighth grade scores compared to the state, again, outperforming the state on slight margins in some cases, higher margins in other cases. And this is our science data. Doing well in science. This is a bit more informative than those graphs. So this is our performance against ourselves, 2019 to 2021. The middle column is the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations in 2019. And then in 2021, the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations. Keep in mind that these are two completely separate cohorts of students that this data is representing. Keep in mind that there was a gap year between 2019 and 2020 when they did not test. But a significant decrease, except for sixth grade English, which was a slight increase, but I would almost call that even. So this data shows us the, the impact of the pandemic, and there is an impact. What I take comfort in looking at the, you know, the, the end in mind that Tricia presented to us and the fact that our students do very well when they get to high school, and that even though developmentally, from a test perspective, they're showing us that they're not meeting the mark where we want them to be. In the end, they're showing us that the middle school is setting a foundation for the students to show what they know and be able to perform on those standardized tests. But this is, you know, data worth noting. I think the state, in choosing to, to have, administer MCAS and in choosing to have these numbers reported, is really looking for evidence that students need to be in school. And this data certainly very clearly shows that, particularly for students between the ages of eleven and fourteen that have a lot of developmental challenges. I don't mean they have developmental challenges, but I mean, you know, from a maturity standpoint where they are. More Project Adventure photos of kids working together cooperatively to achieve a common goal of moving across the field. Okay, so our in-school data, our benchmark data that we administered at the beginning of the school year. This is English data, and I'm calling it writing. I'm not calling it writing. It is writing because we focused primarily on writing. Because what MCAS was telling us and what we have known for a while is that writing is an area that needs improving, which is interesting, you know, to hear Tricia say writing is a real strength. So it makes me question, is it the writing that needs improving? Or is it the, you know, the way to take a test, you know, and how to perform on a standardized test? But what this data is showing, so the assessment across the board, six, seven, and eight, there were three different assessments that the teachers developed. And it was to read a piece of expository text, to restate the question, to answer the question, to provide evidence from the text to support your answer, and then to provide a conclusion. So this was a four-point rubric, four being the highest or the green on the graphs that you're looking at, and one being the lowest or the blue. So ideally, what we want to see in terms of the progression over time is more yellow and green on these charts. We have the majority of students in sixth and seventh grade performing in the two area, and the majority of, of eighth graders at threes, so that looks a bit better. This is initial unsupported assessment data. It gives us a benchmark of where they are coming in and the areas that we need to focus on for improvement. And I'll get into some of those specifics in a bit. And in a bit, here we are. It's a bit. So strengths, the strengths here are based on NPAS data and lots of areas of strength in, in reading. So when we look at the itemized analysis of questions, essentially what I did is I went through and looked at the questions that had the highest percentage rate. And these were the specific standard areas in English that we were showing strength in. And then writing across the board is the area that is showing, it's the area we need to improve on, but not necessarily narrative writing. So the narrative piece is in MCAS is typically, you know, I'm going to, here's a story that is started, and then we stop it, and you, the student, need to pick up the story midway through. You need to continue it in a logical progression, represent character, setting, and plot in conjunction with what the story has already done, and then wrap it up in a realistic conclusion. That's an area we are stronger in when it comes to writing at the middle school. Where we're seeing an air, need for improvement is in expository writing. So here's an essay, here's an article, they're on similar topics, read them both, absorb them both. Now here's a question asking you to compare and contrast and write an analysis, comparative analysis, using evidence from both pieces of the text to support your claim. So it's. So it's complicated for kids, this kind of writing. And this kind of writing is, so writing is a tactile thing. It's something that you need to, you need to put pen to paper, you need to highlight, you need to put margin notes in what you're reading. You need to say, okay, I'm going to start with this and move it here, and I'll, I'll do different organization. You need the teacher there to model for you, to demonstrate it for you. You need the teacher leaning over and showing you. It's something that's very challenging to teach on a computer to children. You know, let me show you this, and, and I'll model on my screen. And trying to tell a student how to do something in a tactile way from a remote perspective is really challenging. So it's, it's an area that showed as a weakness for us in our standardized testing. It's showing an area, as an area that needs to be improved in our benchmark assessment data. And we're leaning in heavily to this type of instruction going forward, and I'll get more into that too as we move along. So when we look at math in our benchmark assessment data, we used our iXL program and took the diagnostic assessment, and it covers a variety of domains, which you can see at the bottom. The first graph is our overall math level. The vertical axis that says two hundred, four hundred, six hundred, that's second grade, fourth grade, sixth grade. So what you want to see when you're looking at this for the sixth grade, in this case, is you want to see those blue graphs up near that six hundred. We're expecting our fifth graders at this time of year to be mid to high range in the fifth grade benchmarks. And they are. So kudos to our elementary teachers and our elementary program in terms of preparing the kids for math. They've come to sixth grade pretty well-prepared. Some of the areas, like geometry, are lower than we would like them to be, but still considering the learning structure and what they went through with the pandemic, this is really good news. The red graph is our small group special education classes. And just to put it in perspective, the red bar represents six students. And then if we look at seventh grade, so again, similar to what you're seeing here, the two hundred, four hundred, six hundred, eight hundred, that's second grade, fourth grade, sixth grade, eighth grade. We would like to see those blue bars up between the six and eight hundred mark to show us that our seventh grade students are, you know, mid to end of seventh grade skills. And we're not seeing that. So we are seeing a bit of a lag in the math assessment data. And again, geometry comes in as the lowest domain. And I've got some interesting information about that that I'll, I'll share as we move forward. And then our eighth grade data, which also has some special education students represented, in this case, four students. We're looking for the data to be, you know, those numbers to be up closer to the eight hundred mark, and they are much more so. Again, geometry stands out as an area for growth. So the strengths that are here are, are the strengths that were represented through iXL and also MCAS. I have it listed, have geometry listed as a strength, and also as an area as for needing improvement. Because our benchmark assessment data is highlighting geometry. But if you look at the MCAS assessment, it said we were strong in geometry, particularly in grade eight. So it's just important to keep in mind the, you know, what we're looking at when we're looking at the data and the, you know, the MCAS assessment is one day out of the student's life. The benchmark assessment data is a little bit longer, and it's a little bit more holistic, I think, in terms of its validity. So what are we doing to support kids? And to help bridge the gaps that we're seeing in the data? So we will continue to focus on SEL, not because it, not just because it's good work, because it's also part of our new district strategic plan. Our charter words through ruler that were chosen by kids and teachers, basically every living and breathing person in the middle school were that we want to feel safe when we're at school, we want to feel respected, we want to feel accepted, and we want to feel happy. And I think the cultural data that we're collecting is showing that our kids are feeling all of these things, and that's a real positive. We'll continue staff training around mental health and trauma. Again, leaning into the SEL work and really seeing that we're reaping the benefits of the training that we've had so far with teachers, and we want to keep that going. We'll leverage the strengths of tech skills that teachers are seeing and really let the kids explore more and use technology to extend and support the learning, rather than to completely hold the learning, for lack of a better term, in terms of what it did during remote learning. We'll look at digital portfolios and ways to help kids leverage those strengths to show what they know. In math, our math department chair and our math team are talking about revisiting and reteaching key concepts based on the data that we're seeing, looking at the standards from the prior year, and seeing what the performance is on those standards, and then looking at the standards for the current year and bridging those gaps. Our math department chair, when I talked to him about our geometry numbers and what the concerns were, he was really feeling very confident about the, the end goal. He said he keeps the long view in mind, and he pointed out the strength of our students in geometry in the high school. So he's reassuring our middle school teachers that the work they are doing, although it may not be showing up in assessment data, is absolutely preparing our students because they're showing readiness to meet, to meet the educational demands within, within the program when they get to the high school. And then Kate, this, this last bullet will help address a little bit of what your question was for Tricia about how we identify the students. And I think, well, actually, it was your question, Kate. So the SAT process is the student assistance team. And it is myself, our dean of students, our school psychologist, our school adjustment counselor, and our learning center teacher, or our teacher who provides tier-two intervention supports to general education students. So we meet regularly with the teachers every week. We, meaning my dean of students and school adjustment counselor, they go to team meetings every week, talk about kids, talk about, you know, what are the challenges, what are you seeing? Share ideas with the teachers on things that they can do. The teachers try different, different accommodations, they try different strategies and interventions. And if those things aren't working within the classroom, they then refer those students to the SAT team. We then do things like go in and observe the student and collect more data. And then determine ultimately if the student either needs to be referred for special education services, referred for 504s, or referred to our learning center, which is that general ed support. And that can be a, a class that the kids attend anywhere from two times a week to four times a week to focus on math specifically, or writing specifically, or executive functioning. It's meant to be a short-term intervention with the students graduating. We, we, our goal is to graduate all students out of the learning center by the end of eighth grade, but that's not always a goal we can attain. So when Tricia talked about the middle school and the high school communicating, we communicate about the students in the learning center, why they entered, how long they've been there, what they're working on, and what those extra supports they may need. So as we formalize the process between the middle school and high school, we will pull that process in and overlap, but overlay it onto teacher communication from eight to nine and, and use more of a data-focused strategy for that communication. That was a long-winded, rambly way to try to answer your question. So when it's time for more questions, just lay it on me if that was just more confusing. And I think this might be our last slide before questions. So in addition to the, the previous things I said we were doing, you know, what we're going to, what we're started to do already and will do much more comprehensively next year is to really rely on data to inform our instruction in a broader way. And we'll be looking for more sources of data collection. So of course, we'll use MCAS data. But it's important to remember, MCAS data is a day or two out of our kids' lives. So we need to have, you know, be implement our own benchmark assessment data, trimester data that shows growth over time. So we'll continue to use iXL, we'll continue to do writing assessments. We will be piloting a new tool called iReady in December. And this will, I'm excited for this because we're using iXL, but we're questioning whether or not it's the right tool for us. So i, iReady will give us an opportunity to really take a look at the, how, what kind of data we are getting from that. iReady also has structured lessons that go with their program. So if you have a student that needs remediation in a specific area, you can use the, the lessons, standard align, align lessons through iReady. So I'm, I'm eager for this to see if it's going to be right for us, and I'm hopeful that it is. We were also selected this year by the National Assessment, I always get these, I want to say National Association. I'm going to read the acronym because it's late. The National Assessment of Educational Progress. It's basically the school report card. And they do global assessments in fourth grade, eighth grade, and twelfth grade. And we, our eighth grade has been chosen this year, the assessment will be in February, and the focus area will be reading and math. So we'll get some really good data from that. Our teachers across the board are increasing the use of formative assessments in all of their classes, which essentially means a lot of little dipstick, check-in quizzes, where are you, what do you know? Let's go back and reteach. Doing this a lot more because the need to reteach is greater this year. It's, it's always a need, but this year it's greater, and the data is showing us that. So rather than like, okay, our unit's over, here's the test, and it's, you either fail or you pass. It's a lot more little mini tests along the way and a lot of revisiting and reteaching. Vertical data meetings in English and math. So we started that, that'll happen each trimester, we've started that with iXL, we'll continue it with the iReady. And our teachers will continue with the writing assessments. And then iReady in English will give us some good data on other content standards around reading. Vertical review and analysis of student work. So this is something I'm implementing in January during our faculty meeting time. I'll be having teachers come together in vertical teams to choose a student that they're concerned about, choose a standard that they feel they might need a little bit of input in terms of how to best address, and to sit with their colleagues, to look at the student work, to look at the, the assessments they're developing, the lessons they're developing, and, and really work as a team to, to build this vertical perspective and support system. Writing, so we have a lot of new teachers at the middle school this year, which is really wonderful, new teachers. Some with some experience, some right out of grad school, all eager and energized and just so awesome. So they are being trained in brainframes, which is an approach to writing. It's a way to teach kids how to organize their thoughts and their thinking to prepare for an essay, to prepare for a test, to prepare for a presentation. It's, it's a way for kids to make their learning very visible. So we've started the training with teachers, they just ended their third session, and they will be practicing what they learned in the classroom and bringing back some sample work for the next session. And then writing in general, we, we are increasingly writing not only in English, but across other content areas, social studies and science. English will, you know, practice writing in all, all genres, but they really will lean more into those expository writing pieces and giving the kids a lot of practice in citing their sources, because that is where we're seeing they need a lot of help. They do journal, daily journal reflections, all the way from sixth grade all the way up to twelve. Social studies will be focusing more on argumentative essays and opinion pieces and project reflection pieces. In sixth grade, our English teacher, social studies teacher, and science teacher are going to be working together collaboratively on interdisciplinary writing, really using some of those expository science pieces or some, some of those expository articles in social studies and bringing them in under the English umbrella and working together as a team and supporting students from all angles. Science writing is mostly, it's, it's lab writing. They call them CERs, which is part of the STEM scopes curriculum, which is claim, evidence, and reasoning, which is essentially that expository writing, you know? Make a claim, support your claim with evidence, and then give us the reasoning why you made this claim and why you chose this evidence. So all of these writing experiences will come together to really bolster instruction for the kids and keep those writing numbers at the high school as strong as they are. So a lot of information, me kind of rambling along at you, I really appreciate the time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Joanne. That was awesome. I loved hearing all about the writing and writing across the curriculum and writing the, uh, writing assessments that you're doing. It's awesome. And I'm glad to hear that the kids are doing so well post-COVID. I don't really have any questions. Does anybody have questions for Joanne? I'm looking at Teresa smiling, and I know she's going to have a question.
I actually don't have a question. I have no question at all, but I will, as a parent of a middle school student who is happy and who is reaping the benefits of all of your team's hard work, I can say thank you.
Great. Thank you, Teresa. Thanks, thanks for making such great kids, too.
Anyone else have questions for Joanne?
I have a question. Joanne, I love all of the quick measures for sort of getting really efficient data. I'm a data person, and so I love that you're able to sort of do those dipsticks and gather the information that you guys need to, to sort of put those target, targeted evidence-based interventions in place. I'm wondering, once a student reaches, is it the student assistant team that then sends a student to the, the learning center?
Yeah.
Is that like the referral process?
Yeah.
Is there, are we using, in our district or even in the, the school, are we using specific programs to guide our intervention? Or is that sort of at the discretion of the, the teachers in that role?
We are using specific programs. So we're using a variety of different assessment tools. Our teacher in the learning center is certified special education teacher. She's also an Orton-Gillingham-trained reading specialist. So she has a lot of skills, she has a teaching assistant that works with her. So she'll, it's a long list, and I'd be happy to share them with you directly through email, if you'd like, in terms of the assessments that we use and the, the writing program that we use. We use primarily iXL for the math program, which is, you know, something we'll need to take a look at when it comes to looking at iReady and whether or not iReady is something that is a, you know, an and or, or a replacement to iXL. Empower Writing is the writing program, the brainframes that we're training our teachers in is part of the Empower Writing process. So in addition to just the column graphic organizers, Student Generator graphic organizer is what brainframes are. In addition to that, that then extends up into a much more comprehensive writing program and writing curriculum.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else? We're kind of fried because we had a pre-meeting meeting, so we're just tired, Joanne. That's why we don't have a lot.
I understand. As someone who's been up since five o'clock this morning, I hear you.
That was, that was really awesome. Thank you so much for the, the presentation.
Sure. And, you know, if anything comes to mind tomorrow after a good night's sleep and you want to reach out to me directly, please don't hesitate. I really appreciate the, the collective brain.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Okay.
All right, guys, that's, that's it for presentations. Does anybody have a school committee comment? Pam, do you have any closing remarks?
No, just thanks to Tricia and Joanne for well-thought-out presentations. And there is really tremendous work being done this year, as in every year. But I just think we're all, I just love seeing those pictures. And I just, the pictures capture what I think I'm seeing every day, and the commentary from the faculty kind of validate what I think I'm seeing. So it, it's just, you know, very upbeat at the middle high school.
I thought the presentations were particularly good tonight. I feel like that was, maybe we all polished our presentation skills during, during the last year. I thought that was awesome. And then, you know what else I wanted to say is just, I feel like everybody's just exhausted. So I hope that everybody is taking care of themselves, as well as taking care of the children and taking care of the teachers, if you're an administrator, because I work in a school too. And I just, I feel like we're all, everybody's trying so hard to make this year be great that everybody's kind of exhausted, and so I just hope everybody's also giving themselves a break too.
Thanks for that, Sarah. Tomorrow's faculty meeting day at the middle school, and we're going to have cookies and orchard apples. And just, I'm just telling them, go sit in the sunshine and decompress with each other and vent and complain and do whatever you need to do to just kind of let some, let some of the steam out of the kettle. Because teachers are working very, very hard, and the pandemic isn't over, you know? It still is there, even though our numbers look really great. But thanks for that comment, because I think it means a lot to our teachers to know that you acknowledge that.
Yeah, definitely. All right. Well, if nobody has any further school committee comments or questions, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, Harrington.
Thanks, Matt. Um, okay, so Kate, are you a yes?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Ooh, Eric's back on, Eric, are you a yes for adjourning?
I'm a yes, sorry, I was, sorry I was so late.
No, that's totally fine, sometimes our, um, our, our other jobs call. Um, and I'm a yes, and so thank you, meeting's adjourned, and thanks, everybody, for coming tonight.
Night.
Good night.